We can't, uh, I T S one, let us do it anymore again.
I'm gonna run back up to St. Erscham, but I'll be back eventually, I guess.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the October 24th Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to welcome you all to this meeting. My name is Les Tillery and I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission. There may be some of you here tonight that have never been to a Planning Commission meeting, so I'd just take, like to take just a minute to explain how the committee functions. The Planning Commission consists of twelve regular members and two supernumerary members. Each member is a volunteer and were appointed by the mayor. The Planning Commission is made up of two subcommittees, the subdivision committee and the zoning committee. Each, each committee meets separately from the Planning Commission meeting. Subdivision meets on the third Wednesday of each month and the zoning committee meets on the second Wednesday of each month. These meetings are open to the public and they're located on the seventh floor of City Hall. The time for those meetings is seven thirty a.m. Primary responsibilities of the Planning Commission are to recommend zoning ordinance amendments, annexation and zoning requests to the city council, to adopt and apply subdivision recommendations, to approve location, character and extent requests, to approve city master plans, to approve vacation of right-of-way requests, street name change requests and plat vacation requests. The Planning Commission is supported by an excellent planning department and staff which reviews each item before, before it comes to the Planning Commission to make sure it meets the requirements of the ordinances, rules and regulations that apply to development throughout the city. At this time, I'd like to have our members introduce themselves and we'll start down here on my right.
TJ Mears.
Donna Hendricks.
Kyle Collins.
Gary Whitley.
And I'm Les Tillery.
Sally Warden.
Peggy Richard.
Kelly Scrimsher.
Jim McGuthy, Planning Department.
And behind us here, we have Michelle Jordan and Claudia Anderson. So the first item on our agenda is the adoption of minutes.
So move.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, part two, actually the, the first heading under our agenda is public hearings. And I would like to just take just a second to explain how a public hearing works. Each item, as it's called, if you have an interest in making a comment on that item, we'd ask you to move to one of the two microphones at, at either, either side of the room at the podium. State your name and your address for the record and then make your comments. We are pretty good listeners and we take notes and we, 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 we try to find out, if you have questions during your comments, during the action portion of our agenda, which will come later, we try to address those and find out some information about your concern before we take a vote on each item. I would ask that if you have, have a comment that somebody else has already made, that you don't repeat that comment again. That will save us time and I can assure you, we've, we have heard that comment already and have it written down. After the public hearing, you're invited to stay to, to, to get, so we can go to the action item of our agenda and we'll discuss each item amongst ourselves and then take a vote on it. And if you're interested, you, you should stay, stick around and see how things, see how the vote turns out. Okay, we'll call each item and Thomas will give us a brief presentation on the item and then we'll, I'll call for a public hearing. So the first item under public hearings is Balch Senior Cotages and it has been withdrawn. So we will move to the second item, Celia's Garden subdivision. Thomas?
Celia's Garden subdivision is located southwest city, south of Hobbs Road and west of Bell Road. This item was before you in August of 2016 for layout of fifty lots and a preliminary of twenty-five. This item is now being increased to, from fifty to sixty-four lots and is zoned R1B and is overall twenty-one point forty-nine acres.
Is there anyone here to comment on Celia's, Celia's Garden? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. I need to go back to item one, Balch Senior Cotages. This item was withdrawn, but we still will hear public comments at this time, if there are any. Alright, we'll hold that public hearing open at such time it can be on our agenda for action. So item three, Chimney Creek subdivision, it has been withdrawn also, but we will hear public comments at this time if there's anyone to comment on that item. Okay, again, we'll hold that item open until it can be put on an action agenda. Item four is Oak Grove at Farley Farm Phase Eight.
Oak Grove, Oak Grove at Farley Farm Phase Eight is located southwest city, west of South Memorial Parkway and north of Green Cove Road. This item is zoned R2B is over, overall eleven point ninety-nine acres. And this item will continue development of the Oak Grove at Farley Farms, which was, to the south, was final platted for Phase Six and Phase Seven of thirty-seven lots in March of 2017.
Is there anyone here to comment on Oak Grove at Farley Farm Phase Eight? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item five is Preserve at Inspiration Creek Phase Three.
Preserve and Inspiration Phase Three, this item is located southeast city, west of South Shawty Road and south of Valley Green Road. This item is zoned R1 and is overall ninety-six point twelve acres. This continues development of the Preserve and Inspiration Phase One and Phase Two. Phase Two was preliminaryed in March of 2017.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Preserve at Inspiration Phase Three? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Anita Rec. I live at fourteen one zero one Montevideo. The street I live on will intersect with the Southern Point and the first road coming into the new proposed subdivision. I've been a property owner for seventeen years and I've been a resident for over fifteen years. I'd like to discuss the traffic, public safety and environmental issues regarding this subdivision and also the current woodland home subdivisions that are being built on the mountain. I sent Kimberly earlier today, three handouts for you. I hope you were able to get them in a timely manner. The first one is a site map of the two current subdivisions, Inspiration and Preserve.
Is that?
Yes.
Yep, we have it.
Okay. Inspiration is now in Phase Four, I believe, and when Phase, Phase Five is complete, there will be approximately two hundred and twenty homes in this area. The Preserve right now is in Phase One with Phase Two, as you say, was approved in March of 2017 and there will be additional seventy-eight homes in that subdivision. With both of these subdivisions totaled together, there will be a new total on, built on the mountain of two hundred and ninety to three hundred homes. Four years ago, October 2013, the current homes listed on Green Mountain were two hundred and seventy homes. I'll call those the legacy homes. So we're saying four, four years ago, two hundred and seventy homes. Fast forward to today, four years later, we're getting ready to add three hundred more homes. So I just said, let that sink in for just a minute. I just wondered if at the time when you approved those two subdivisions, did you even realize that would be increasing our population and the homes by a hundred and eleven percent? Now, the legacy homes have been up there approximately forty to fifty years. They're between there and now. And now we're getting ready to overdouble that, up to three hundred new homes. Now let's add to the new proposal of a hundred and seven lots. So that, that brings us up to within the last four years, four hundred and seven new lots. Where four years ago, we had two hundred and seventy lots. That's an increase of a hundred and fifty percent. If this subdivision is built and all the homes are built, along with the Preserve and the Inspiration, there'll be over seven hundred homes on Green Mountain. With this number of homes and all the drivers, to me, it's compelling to ask that we have a traffic and safety study. The second handout that Kimberly should have provided to you is a two thousand and seven report by Chuck Gibb, who at that time was our current Green Mountain Civic League president. He had provided an overview of a traffic study that was prepared in October 2006 by private contractor, Sir Madison Kirk of Lexington, Kentucky. They were doing that at a request of Forsyte, who at that time was working with a development, Love Development Company out of California. They were trying to rezone the Inspiration property up there from R1 to PDH, which of course you know is a planned development, high density. In his report, Chuck states that Green Mountain Road, Road was labeled as a Class Two road, which under the federal traffic guidelines definition is a rural two-lane road with forty-five mile per hour speed limit and available areas for passing. Also that South Shawty is further characterized as a low-speed road with adequate sight distance. The report employed one composite grade of seven point six percent grade over the entire length of the road. When Chuck met in January of two thousand and seven with Andy Dingus, Diges of the engineering, City of Huntsville Engineering Department, there was an agreement that many areas of this traffic study were incorrect. There's no passing lanes going down the mountain. The average speed is not forty-five miles an hour. It's about thirty miles an hour. And the composite grade, based on the city's elevation prof, profiles, is ten point four percent. On the third handout, oh, those, those numbers that I just quoted were on page four and five of your second handout. The third handout that I provided are just additional comments, comments regarding that traffic study that was done eleven years ago. My question is, do you have a current traffic report study that you review? Is there a current accident report from HPD? Green Mountain Road, Green Mountain Streets, Green Mountain going down to South Shawty, Green Mountain to Bailey Cove? If not, a decision tonight to improve that subdivision and would be based on very incomplete and very outdated information. If you need proof of the traffic impact that all these new subdivisions are bringing to our mountain, you need like any, you need not to look any further except at the intersection of Green Mountain Road and Bailey Cove, where a new truck traffic light was installed less than five days ago. Moving on to other issues. For the approval of the Inspiration and the Preserve subdivisions, was an environmental study performed prior to that? If it was, did it verify that the additional three hundred lots would have any impact on leeching into our groundwater? We're all on septic tanks, as you're aware. If you do have a report on the environmental study of those three hundred lots, I would like to have a copy of that if, if possible. Does the City of Huntsville or the Madison County Health Department know the maximum number of septic tanks that the mountain can handle? If not, I believe as good stewards of our land, it is imperative for the commission to ascertain an estimate based from a reliable, non-bias consultant. And looking over the proposed a hundred and seven lots, I do appreciate that several of the fronted lots that I got to look at just a few moments ago on a plat are about a hundred and fifty feet wide. That is a much, much greater improvement from the seventy to a hundred foot frontages of the dense urban developments and the other woodland homes on our mountain. But it's nothing compared to the legacy homes. Where ninety percent of our people up here have homes on one and a half to two acres and many of them have three to five acre lots. This development will have negative impact on the residents, traffic, wildlife and the environment. Perhaps if Mr. Friday had been cognizant of all these lot issues and preserving the character of our mountain, we wouldn't be having this discussion. I can speak for many of the legacy residents here when I say that we chose to live on that mountain with all the good and all the bad, for the tranquil rural settings and the wide-open spaces to view the stars at night and the wildlife during the day. If you vote to proceed with this subdivision, it may very well be the beginning of the end for the things that we take for that mountain is so unique and appealing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to comment?
My name is John Lassick. I live at thirteen three oh nine South Village Square Road, otherwise known as the last house before you get to this new subdivision. In fact, I think I can almost see it up there, uh, in the middle line of the lots. We've owned three and a half acres in that spot for eighteen years and we had built a house up there and had lived there sixteen years. There isn't much more probably I can say than has just been said so eloquently. But I will ask, how many of you on the Planning Commission have been up to Green Mountain before all of the new houses and now after all of the new houses? Hands? So one thing I would request is that all of you take a ride up there and take a look at all the situations that were presented here. But I'm here to, to talk about me because before it was about other people. I never thought we'd get to this point and get around to me because I owned enough property and close to this fifty acres that this wouldn't be a problem. But now, here we are. So I don't think we're here to argue and fight and if it wasn't Mike Friday, who knows, it might have been somebody else. I think it lies back with the character again of what Green Mountain had become with the current residents. We moved up there and we conformed to the folks that were already there because they came before us. Now we have so many people all of a sudden that have discovered Green Mountain that want to live up there too. Fantastic. Go buy two or three lots, go buy an acre, go buy two acres and do what we did. I feel it's the Planning Commission's responsibility in any community to consider the folks that live there now and not only the folks that are wanting to live there in the future and all the business interests that could come from that. The, and I, and I don't mean this in any disrespect to anyone, but now this particular plot of land is diagonal between two multimillion dollar houses, mine and Bob Barron's. So now we're not in the cheap seats anymore. And Bob and I both came up the hard way and earned every penny we, and work we put into those houses. And we expected to be able to go to the nursing home, as my wife and I would talk about, after this house. But we put our house up for sale about two, three weeks ago because if all those houses are gonna go up over there between the noise, the traffic and all, that's not what an estate property was supposed to be. And I understand that the zoning allows for certain considerations. But I also know in other areas of cities that the Planning Commission has the ability to look at all aspects and possibly make some changes with negotiations between the developer and us. When we lived in the county twenty-seven years, we knew what we were getting into. Dogs run all over the place, people shoot guns, people going down the street, people screaming, entertainment at all hours of the night. We put up with that. But in the city of Huntsville? If I go downtown, I look at a community that Mayor Tommy Battle was building for the future and it's pretty got certain character. It's all being shaped in certain character. Well, that's what we wanted for Green Mountain, but that's not what we've received. I ask you tonight to consider the folks that live there again. It's an old story, but it's the same story. And then I'll leave the public safety, the need for a full-time firehouse, all the speeding issues and everything else that's come since this started, um, just to others. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to comment? Yes, ma'am.
Is this mic live?
Yes, it is.
My name is Dee O'Malley and I live at fifty Bluffview Drive Southeast in the Inspiration subdivision on Green Mountain. My husband and I were fortunate enough to be able to purchase almost a two-acre lot on the bluff. We built a new house and we moved in this past, I think it was the end of September or August, I forget. But we've been there a little over a year and we love it. Prior to that, we lived on Bluewood Drive for fifteen years in South Huntsville. We spent almost every Sunday looking for a new home or a piece of land we could build something on. And I love South Huntsville and I did not want to leave it. And then fortunately, Mike Friday came along and bought property out of bankruptcies and developed them. And the part of Inspiration we live in was one of the parts that Mike built out. So it gave my husband and I an opportunity to build a brand-new house, certainly not multi-million dollars, but a fairly comfortable retirement, four thousand square foot home on a bluff in South Huntsville. There's nothing like it. I think that if the Planning Commission would give some consideration to the property taxes that will be created by this continuation of a wonderful community that Mr. Friday has built on the mountain and how that would help Huntsville in general. Plus be a place for people coming from other cities and countries to have, for people to build out brand-new homes and still access the arsenal, which is very important to a lot of my neighbors. I think that in the interest of South Huntsville and the ongoing growth of our community in general, it would be a wonderful thing if you would approve Mike's plans. And I invite you all to come up on the mountain and come to our lodge and meet the neighbors and see the sense of community that has developed within Inspiration and the Preserve. It's a wonderful place to live and to my dying day, I'm going to live in that house. I'm going out foot-first. And I'm going to thank Mr. Friday for allowing me to remain in South Huntsville. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jeanne Genuch. I live at one zero zero one six Bluff Drive, which is not on Green Mountain. And all the comments that I've heard so far have been pertaining specifically to how this development might benefit or detract from those who do live on the mountain. However, the mountain is located in a larger community within South Huntsville. Mr. Friday's development is extremely beneficial to our entire community. His development is bringing in new families, many younger families who have children who are attending our schools. The support that this is giving to the public schools in our area is invaluable. The support that, that this, that these new neighbors are giving to our schools is beneficial to the entirety of Huntsville. It is actually helping to lift up our entire public school system and right now, that's a, that's a big concern. So that's, that's really all I have to say. I do not live on the mountain, but some consideration might also be given to how this development affects the larger community, not only those who have chosen to, to live on the mountain. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jackie Reed. I don't live southeast, but I live in everybody within the city limits' home. Just like Madison, when I go to the council, say, "Where do you live?" My car's sitting out there in the parking lot, so. I just want to say, the traffic, I don't see new roads going in and out of this and you've got some people, we got a lot of neighborhoods. I come up here, see a lot of people begging. Why the city don't do more work and have more meetings before you bring it up here to the planning department and get your homework done before you bring these people in here for you to vote on it tonight. I've never understood that. In Green Mountain, all I hear with the school problems. The roads are so bad up there, the buses can't even pick up the children for the schools. I've heard that on Facebook and everywhere. I don't even think the school buses go up there because of the hills and the roads are so bad. So as the city looked into that, have you talked to the school board? Or do you ever deal with the school board in, in any way? But, but this is important to the neighborhoods and to the people. The traffic congestion of getting in and out and does the school bus run up there and does they pick up the children and why don't they? I mean, there's just a lot of questions that should be answered before you all take your votes. That's one thing I've never understood, why do we don't work out the problems with the public before you take a vote? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to comment? Okay, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you for all of your comments. Alright, item six is Retreat at Goose Creek Phase Two.
Retreat at Goose Creek Phase Two is located southeast city, east of Old Highway four thirty-one and south of Berkeley Road. This item is zoned R2B and is overall eleven point twenty-one acres. This item was before you and final platted for thirty-four lots in July of 2017. Uh, these additional twenty-one lots are where preliminary has expired and is before you for preliminary and potential final in the following month.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Retreat at Goose Creek Phase Two? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item seven is Riverside at Butler Basin Phase Two.
Riverside at Butler Basin Phase Two is located southeast city, west of Hobbs Island Road and south of Cap Atkins Road. This item is zoned R2A is overall two point eighteen acres. And this is before you, was before you for a re-preliminary of fifty-six lots in September of 2017 and this includes an additional six lots to be laid out in preliminary.
Is there anyone here to comment on Riverside at Butler Basin Phase Two? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Karen McLeod and I live at one oh one Railway Lane Huntsville alongside, um, the subdivision that's being built. And last month in- And last month in September, we came before the board, we were concerned about some issues with flooding on our property and we've since worked with the developer and we just wanted to document our verbal agreements. The first agreement is that the land behind our, adjoining to our house and the new property will continue to be at a low level so all the water will flow downward and not puddle in our yard. The sprinkler system that we had put in place will be put back in place. The zoysia, that sod that we have put in will be put back and the land behind our house will be used for drainage only and not for easement access right-ofways. And that's all I would like to report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to comment on Riverside at Butler Basin Phase Two? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item eight is Southgate Subdivision Phase Four.
Southgate Subdivision Phase Four is located southeast city, south of Taylor, Taylor Lane and west of Highway 431. This item is zone R2A is overall 7.6 acres. Phase Three of this subdivision was final plotted for 21 lots in July of 2015.
Is there anyone here to comment on Southgate Subdivision Phase Four? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item nine, Thorson Acres Phase Three, a re-subdivision of Lot Two of Thorson Acres.
Thorson Acres Phase Three is located northwest city, south of McCrory Road and west of Nance Road. This item is zone R2B and is overall 65.35 acres.
Is there anyone here to comment on Thorson Acres Phase Three? Okay, yes, sir.
My name is Tom Hartley. I live at 149 McCrory Road. This is my first time attending one of these meetings. Is this an appropriate time for me to ask a couple of questions associated with that, the development of that property?
You, you can ask your questions. I can't promise you that we'll answer them right now.
Okay.
We will, we will write them down and we will, we will discuss them at the appropriate time.
And if I can get a point of contact with regard to answering the questions for me?
Sure.
Is that right? My first question is with regard to this development of this property, which the, the developer being Church of the Highlands, my property, which is directly across McCrory Road where the boundary will be for these, these two lots that are going to be developed. My first question is, will, will McCrory Road be widened associated with the, with this development? Will there be a widening of McCrory Road? That's my first question. My second question is, will there be an entrance to this Church of Highlands property off of McCrory Road? Can that be answered this evening or how does this work?
Sir, if you want to give, I'll give you my name and number outside. I'll go talk with you about it for the layout of the property and the, and the civil design of the site itself. I'll be more than happy to talk to you about that. My name's Jim McGuffey.
Jim McGuffey. And can I get your telephone number, Jim?
427-5100.
427-5100. All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else to comment on Thorson Acres Phase Three? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 10, Whitesburg Estates Jackson Bend Edition Phase Two has been withdrawn, but we will hear public comments if anyone would like to comment. All right, we'll, we'll hold that item open until it can be on an agenda for an act, for action. Item 11 is Wildwood Cove.
Wildwood Cove is located northwest city, south of Harbin Road and east of Waltrana Highway. This item is zone R2 and is overall 30.54 acres. This item was before you in February of 2017 for preliminary of 26 lots. This item could not be preliminary past 26 lots due to a court permit. That court permit has been received and now can seek to be developed for the 67 lots in question.
Is there anyone here to comment on Wildwood Cove? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 12, The Retreat.
The Retreat is also located northwest city, south of Harbin Road and east of Waltrana Highway. This item is zone R2 and is overall 37.6 acres. This item was before you for relayout in February of 2017 and could not be preliminary due to the same need of a court permit. That court permit has been received and is before you for a re-preliminary at this time.
Is there anyone here to comment on The Retreat? Yes, ma'am. Do you have a comment? Okay. All right, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 13, Village of Providence Phase Ten.
Village of Providence Phase Ten is located northwest city, north of US Highway 72 and west of Providence Main Street. This is a, a part of the overall Providence pud development and is located in Transx4. This item is 14.38 acres and re-preliminary of this item was before you in March of 2017. There was some minor adjustment to lot lines going from 49 lots to 51 lots.
Is there anyone here to comment on Village of Providence Phase Ten? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 14, Location, Character and Extent. Item 14A, Big Spring Park Sidewalk Art Mural has been withdrawn. We will hear public comments. Okay, we will, we will hold that item open until it can be placed on an action agenda. Item 14B, Huntsville International Airport Airline Rear Canopy.
Huntsville International Airport Rear Canopy is located northwest, southwest city, south of Highway I-565 and west Waltrana Boulevard. I'll turn over to Chris Waters for presentation.
Hello, I'm Chris Waters with Chapman System Architects. I'll be fairly brief. This is a canopy for outgoing baggage on the backside of the terminal. The character matches all of the existing building materials that are out there right now. The purpose is really to provide, after the bags are screened and they're, you know, being loaded up on, on tugs going out to the airplane, provide some weather protection for that, but that's, that's it.
Okay. Is there anyone here to comment on the Huntsville International Airport Airline Rear Canopy? Right, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 14C, Huntsville High School Softball Complex Renovation and Addition.
Huntsville High School Softball Complex Renovation is located southwest city, north of Bob Wallace Avenue and west of Billy Watkins Street. I'll turn over to Bart Bancowski for presentation.
Good evening. My name's Derek Hart. I'll be talking for Bart. I work at Fuquay and Partner Architects. I'm here to explain the location, character and extent of the Huntsville High School softball complex. It's approximately 5,000 square feet. Approximately 2,800 square feet is a metal building that will contain two batting cages for the high school softball girls. It will also have a 22,000 square foot brick building with a low-slope roof with shingles that will match the character of the dugouts and the concession stand currently at the ballpark. The locker room will connect to the third base dugout and to the metal building structure. The softball locker room is designed such a way that male or female coaches can be within the facility and not be within the girls' changing and shower area. Outside of the metal building, excuse me, will be three, it will be a bullpen with three pitching mounds and plates for warmup during games. There will also be a Panther Plaza, which you see located between the bleachers and the concession stand. All site work will be updated to the new facility and an existing structure will be removed that is currently in that location. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to comment on Huntsville High School Softball Complex Renovation and Addition? Yes, ma'am.
I might ask a question or two about parking. Have you talked with the school system about anything the cities are doing? I guess I'm just trying to find out. We got a lot of problems that's not solved and where's all these people going to park when the students don't even have a parking place over there? So you do talk with the school system, the city does, and try to work it between the school system and what you all do.
Ms. Reed, oh.
Yes or no?
Ms. Reed, we are, this is for, these are accessory structures that people that are attending softball, baseball games are already parking. These are accessory structures for the young ladies to, to dress and prepare for the games. There's no additional infrastructure to accommodate. The, the infrastructure for the softball games already exists and the parking for that already exists. These are accessory structures for the young ladies to dress out and a batting cage.
And, and you all have the parking worked out or where these people going to park?
That's already, that's not a part of this. These are accessory structures. They already have setups and logistics for softball and all the sporting events at Huntsville High. This is not in conjunction with that. These are accessory structures.
City's going to build it. This is the city stuff, right?
This, this structure is accessory, the use is already in place, the games already occur, the parking is already there. This is simply to assist the young ladies so that they have a place to dress out and prepare for the games that they already play.
So we got the parking worked out without having to build a parking garage?
Correct. These are accessory structures.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there anyone else to comment? All right, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 15, Vacation of Right-of-Way, 15A Clement Street, vacate unbuilt portion of right-of-way East Huntsville Addition.
This located, this item is located adjacent to item 17, address 1709 Wellman Avenue. In, this area was plotted in May of 1892. These items were plotted prior to infrastructure being built. These are roads that were never built as a part of the East Huntsville Addition. This item is being vacated to be absorbed into additional property that is, that exists to the east of, east of current.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Vacation of Right-of-Way Clement Street? Right, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 15A, Longwood Drive Vacate Unbuilt Portion of Right-of-Way East End.
This is a unbuilt portion of Longwood Drive. When Governor's Drive was widened some time ago, prior to Longwood existing, Longwood was tied directly into what was or was, what was not Governor's Drive. When Governor's Drive was in, built, this area was never vacated as a part of the property. It's never, it has not existed as right-of, it has existed as right-of-way but currently does not exist in real time as right-of-way. It is a grassed area. So we are seeking to vacate this area and it will be maintained as an easement.
Is there anyone to comment on Longwood Drive Vacation of Right-of-Way? Yes, ma'am.
My son happens to live up there on the corner, right in that area right there and I'm trying to find out what's going on. Is this that part where Bill Kling's, where they're coming off of California Street and going to turn right on Governor's Drive?
This is, this is across from the Kling Park where Longwood ties back into Governor's Drive. It is, it is not, California is to the, to the east, to the west of there.
So you're going up Governor's Drive?
There are four, there are four homes being constructed in front of this area. If you can look at the, the map, the map depicts the area that was actually plotted right-of-way long ti, a long time ago and now it does not exist as asphalt. It is a grassed area. There is no need for it to be plotted as right-of-way no longer. It will be maintained as an easement.
How much right-of-way are you giving it up?
About 300, 200 feet, 200 to 250 feet.
For all of it?
Yes.
I'm watching you.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Anybody else like to comment? All right, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 15C, Creative Way, vacate a portion of the unbuilt right-of-way North Huntsville Industrial Park Phase Six.
Well, this is actually built right-of-way that will, that is located northwest city, north of Bowway Lane and east of Pulaski Pike. In, in September of 2017, a plat was done to combine 263 acres of property into one. This is vacating a portion of that right-of-way and there is sewer located in this area along in this right-of-way and it will be maintained as an easement.
Is there anyone here to comment on Creative Way? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. All right, we'll move to zoning. Item 16A is Harbin Road Zoning.
This zoning item is newly annexed property. This property is approximately 15.48 acres. This property is located on the south side of Harbin Road and west of Nance Road. Planning staff would like to propose a zoning designation of Residence Two. This is a proposed single-family detached subdivision and Residence Two will fit for the proposed developer's product.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Harbin Road Zoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 16B, Old Railroad Bed Zoning.
This zoning item is also newly annexed property. This will also be a proposed single-family subdivision which should tie into the Heritage Brook subdivision to the north. This property is located east of Old Railroad Bed and south of Capshaw Road. This property is approximately 16.42 acres. This property was annexed within the last month and planning staff would also like to propose a Residence Two zoning designation, which is consistent with the Heritage Brook subdivision as well as the Legend Woods subdivision to the north.
Is there anyone here to comment on Old Railroad Bed Zoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 16C, Liberty Hill Zoning.
This item is also newly annexed property. This property is approximately 76 acres. This property is north of the North Huntsville Industrial Park. This property is currently agricultural land. It's located east of Liberty Hill and east of Route Road. Planning staff would like to propose a zoning designation of Planned Industrial District for this property, which will be consistent with the adjacent pieces of North Huntsville Industrial Park.
Is there anyone here to comment on Liberty Hill Zoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 16D, Oakwood Farms Rezoning.
This rezoning request is approximately 23.94 acres. This property is currently split zoned between two different zoning designations. The property is currently zoned Residence 1A and Commercial Industrial Park, which are both the original zoning designations of this property. This property is currently owned by Oakwood University and it is located on the south side of Atvenus Boulevard, on the east side of Wind Drive and on the west side of Sparkman Drive. Oakwood would like to develop this property as an accessory use. It will be a combination of a farmer's market as well as other agricultural components for the university as well as it will be open to the public. Planning staff would like to propose a zoning designation of Research Park District, which is consistent with the majority of Oakwood University and also consistent with our other post-secondary institutions in the city limits.
Is there anyone here to comment on Oakwood Farms Rezoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 16E, Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Research Park District, amends Article 50, Research Park District.
This initial proposed zoning ordinance amendment is to amend Article 50. This is in line with the Cummings Research Park Master Plan, which was adopted last year. The Chamber as well as the Research Park Board had a study conducted by Perkins and Will and as a part of that master plan, planning staff will need to update certain items within our zoning ordinance. The first slide is just a little history on the Research Park zoning designation. So as you can see, the Research Park District stretched all the way back to 1963, which is our current zoning ordinance. And the map here also depicts our current Research Park District. So outside of our Cummings Research Park East area, we also have other areas that include Alabama A&amp;M University and also Oakwood University that would be affected by this as well. On the screen, there are, there's a synopsis of the On the screen, there are, uh, a, there's a synopsis of the changes that have been made. Uh, there's only been one addition of new uses. Banks and credit unions have been included, um, that was previously not listed within, uh, the addition of uses, and that was one recommended use. Also, we have some density control, uh, amendments. The front yard requirement will be relaxed from one hundred and fifty feet to one hundred feet at a minimum. The rear and side yard will be changed from a minimum of fifty feet to ten feet. If they are abutting a residential district, which there are some older, uh, planted subdivisions that are in the Research Park area, they will be required to have a rear and side yard minimum of thirty feet. Also, the height requirement has been relaxed to unlimited unless it abuts a residential district. If it does abut residential, we have a rise and run concept, which we use in other Research Park, uh, applicable districts to, um, provide some type of protection and buffer to those residential districts. Also, the landscaping requirements have been amended as well, uh, to mirror the current side and rear yards. Uh, currently, the landscaping is listed as fifteen feet. Since the proposed side yard and rear yard has been suggested at a minimum of ten feet, it was, uh, appropriate to adjust the landscaping as well.
Is there anyone here to comment, uh, on item sixteen E, Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Research Park District, Article fifty? Yes, ma'am.
May I ask you something? Why, why do we change all these zoning requirements in Research Park? Are we changing it from the whole development out there and turn it into residential, any of it?
Ms. Reed, we're changing this, uh, as a result of a study that was done, uh, for a Research Park Master Plan.
I haven't seen the master plan and nobody else has, as far as I know.
Uh, it, it's available and it was adopted last year. Uh, and the intent of the master plan is to encourage revitalization of our Research Park.
I know. I've been fussing about it for whatever.
And this will help to do that.
To let the developers do what they want to. And nobody answered me. Are we putting houses and shaming it from an industrial, uh, development?
No, ma'am.
We're not.
Yeah.
But we're moving the feet around and giving them more feet and moving in closer. And I heard residential mentioned. So were all those people notified within that?
Some, some of the properties there do abut residential districts, and we've changed the requirement. We've increased the setback for residential, uh, abutment versus what is required in areas that are not abutted a residential area.
I would like to have a copy of some of this tonight, that right there, the changes on that, since I hadn't seen the master plan. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else to comment? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Item sixteen F, Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Research Park West District, amends Article fifty-one, Research Park West District.
The second portion, um, of today's presentation affects Article fifty-one, which is our Research Park West District. This is primarily your area, which is located west of Research Park Boulevard. And this area is depicted on the map. This area has the least number of changes, um, addressed in the overall master plan. Similar to the, uh, Article fifty, Research Park District, this item, um, also has a request to relax the front yard from a minimum of one hundred and fifty feet to one hundred feet. Also, there was a request to relax the acreage from the current minimum of five acres to four acres. And also, we have adjusted the height requirement to mirror that of, uh, the Research Park District, uh, request in Article fifty to unlimited unless it abuts a residential district. Um, there is, there are some existing multifamily districts, as well as there is a planned development that abut the Research Park West area.
Is there anyone here to comment on Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Research Park West District, Article fifty-one?
One more question. When you're changing the height on the districts, is that for the residential or for the other buildings? Or is this all residential right here?
This is, this is in our Research Park West District. Um, their requirements for height are different, uh, when it abuts a residential district versus one, a lot that doesn't.
What's the height going from? What's the height going to? That it changes in it?
The height requirement is based on the distance of the structure from the property line. As you get further away from the property line, the building can be taller. It's strictly a protection mechanism for uses that are non-residential that abut residential uses. In Research Park West to the north, there's an apartment complex and a housing development. So we wanted to add protection measures to make sure that the buildings were far enough, far enough away from those houses as those lots develop out.
This is gonna be for apartments?
There is no residential component to Research Park West. It's strictly an industrial and commercial development zoning district.
You got a master plan on this one, too?
Mrs. Reed, you may want to go to the Chamber of Commerce website. The master plan is posted online. You can type in Cummings Research Park Master Plan and you can view the entire document.
I go and ask for all this stuff and making appointments. I have to make appointments. I never hear a call, call back to me about anything. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to comment on this item? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Okay. Part two of our agenda, uh, I'd like to call on Kyle Collins to provide our subdivision committee report.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, the subdivision committee met on October eighteenth following our, our recommendations. Item number one, Celia's Garden Subdivision. The committee recommends a relayout approval on sixty-four lots with the following modification. Cul-de-sac length to twelve hundred feet along Celia Court.
Is there a motion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is Freeman Square, Phase Two Apartments, presented for boundary plat approval on ten units.
Jim, is this in order?
Yes, sir. It's in order with improvements to be installed October twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is Oak Grove at Farley Farm, Phase Eight. The committee recommends rea, relay out and preliminary approval on twenty-five lots.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, Overton, Phase Two, re-subdivision of Track One of Overton. Staff recommends escrow of sidewalks along a portion of Buford Drive, approximately five hundred and twenty, excuse me, four hundred and twenty-five lineal feet.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, Preserve at Inspiration, Phase Three. The committee recommends layout approval on a hundred and seven lots with a waiver, non-radio lot lines between lots forty-three and the common area one, ninety-seven, the common area two, one hundred through one oh seven, one hundred and seven, and common area two.
Any discussion?
Yes, Ms., uh, Chair. I will start with the discussion. We heard lots of comments regarding, uh, the, this, this item. So I would like to start with, um, my memory, which may not be the best. So if anyone can please help. Several years ago, we started down, uh, with Inspiration and the Preserve, and there was a traffic study which has been shared with us. Uh, there was much discussion, uh, then regarding traffic, uh, road improvements and that kind of thing. Have we had an additional traffic study since then, either from our own staff here or from an outside, um, firm? If so, please remind me of that. There was also a question regarding environmental, uh, studies pertaining to the septic tanks. And I do recall that, uh, the health, Madison County Health Department did give us some information relative to those numbers. If anyone can recall, um, information regarding that, I think we need to, to share that again. The next item I noted was the Fire Department, and I do recall that the city has secured the property, correct, for a future, uh, fire station. There was some discussion. Um, and then regarding the school bus, I don't know if anyone here from Huntsville City Schools or if anyone who has childrens can, can answer, uh, the question regarding, uh, school traffic. However, I would be interested is if we can consider reviewing this, kind of some of the details that we've looked at. However, bearing in mind that before us tonight is only a request for layout of one hundred and seven lots. While we do have a overall kind of responsibility of taking this all into account, we are only voting on what is before us, uh, tonight, which is these one hundred and seven lots. However, I think information regarding septic tanks and traffic and environmental study, uh, would, would aid us and having some of that information that we've already, we've reviewed this before, uh, to bear in mind. Thank you.
Where, where do I begin? I'll start with, uh, the traffic, uh, discussion. Uh, as a part of the Green Mountain overall development, uh, it is a function that the current classification, uh, of the road maintains that the, the road can maintain about fourteen thousand, um, trips. Uh, with the seven hundred potential lots to be developed there on a nine trips per day calculation, that makes it about six thousand five hundred and fifty trips per day, which is only about a forty-seven percent, uh, capacity of the current road that does exist. Um, so from a traffic standpoint, um, and Nicholas, uh, can back me on this, that, um, currently, yes, there may be a, a functional, uh, adjustment to the road, but the capacity of the road is functioning just fine.
And Thomas, was, was that a city study?
That is, uh, based off standard traffic counts, um, from, from the federal government and from the city standpoint, yes. Um, moving forward with, um, within, in regards to, uh, the Preserve and Inspiration Phase Three, a site assessment is provided per every layout of a development in the city of Huntsville. That site assessment is reviewed for capacity for lots to be developed. Um, so there were no, no major impacts of this development to occur on, um, this property based off the site assessment that was reviewed and, um, provided to us by, I think that was OMI, um, who did the, uh, site assessment. So based off that, there are no, uh, no major impacts from this development to, uh, of this, these lots to this particular, uh, property. Looking at a, uh, function of septic tanks within the area, um, the, this is a, a primary function of the Madison County Health Department. The Madison County Health Department does a percolation test per lot that is developed on every single lot, uh, within Madison County. Um, for starting off with Madison County, each lot is essentially supposed to be fifteen thousand square feet at minimum. Um, with that said, most of these lots are above that fifteen thousand square se, feet. But as an added adjustment, Madison County reviews each individual lot as a percolation based on the soil types and the percolation types. So it is their job to therefore assess each individual lot for septic, um, um, runoff and, uh, percolation for each lot. If that lot is not perking, percolating appropriately, that lot is typically not approved for development. Um, sometimes those lots are adjustment, but this is a primary function of Madison County Health Department. Madison County Health Department has provided us that currently, uh, at this standard, even with the seven hundred lots in, in, uh, question, that there are no issues that they foresee, uh, with continuing development on my, on, um, Green Mountain. And, did I miss anything? Schools. I don't have any answers in regards to schools and the school bus, unfortunately. I'm, um, I'm sorry for that.
Thomas, can I just, and, and thank you for your explanation. It was way above my head and I went to Auburn, remember that?
Yes, sir.
Um, if I did the math right, right now you're saying, according to the study, which the city did on traffic counts, right? Then we're at half capacity?
No, not currently. So the, the road overall can carry about fourteen thousand trips per day with the...
Uh, you're right. It, once built out with seven hundred homes.
It would only be at forty, at less than four, less, less than half. So it'd be at forty-seven percent.
I want to make sure I understood that. Okay.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion?
We, we are aware that the city's school buses cannot travel up the mountain, but that is a state requirement because of that particular road. So it would be, uh, prudent for the neighbors, for anyone purchasing a lot up there, to know that, that they would not have school bus service.
When you say that's a state requirement...
Because of that particular road. Because of the grade. It's my understanding is to do with the grade.
Not, not the condition.
No, grade.
Okay.
So the school bus currently does not go there?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, The Retreat at Goose Creek, Phase Two. The committee recommends repreliminary approval on twenty-one lots.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, this is also presented for final approval.
Uh, Jim, is it in order for a final?
Yes, sir, with improvements sidewalks and landscaping to be installed October nineteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Is there a motion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven, Riverside at Butler Basin Subdivision, Phase Two. The committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on six lots.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight, South Gate Subdivision, Phase Four. The committee recommends relay out and repreliminary approval on twenty-seven lots with the following modification, Right-of-Way to forty feet and pavement to twenty-two feet.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine, Thorson Acres, Phase Three, re-subdivision of Lot Two of Thorson Acres. The committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on two lots, and Chair, I need to recuse.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes. Uh, Thomas, can you show us that?
This is a better view of the overall development. Would you like to see it from the, um, area?
That's, that's fine. Do we have any confirmation that the, I'm assuming that's a house, that that homeowner has been contacted?
Yes, he is the actual landowner of round, um, through a trust of, uh, family members. He owns everything around it.
Just wanted to be sure that homeowner was notified. Thank you.
To Mr., uh, Mr. Hart's question, do we have any information about the, the road or the, or an entrance?
Well, currently at this time...
It's still in the civil site plan review process and we're determining the traffic count and then what roads, if not roads, deceler or exel lanes are necessary for the turn-ins and then establishing where those turn-ins are gonna be. So...
Okay.
It'd be great if he calls me and we can go over what we've seen so far.
Okay. Good. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number ten, Wildwood Cove. Committee recommends repreliminary approval on sixty-seven lots.
Any discussion?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chair, Thomas, repreliminary on, on these two, can you tell me when the initial preliminary was given, what year?
Well, um, the first, if you look at this entrance off of, um, Harbin Road, uh, this was the first twenty-seven lots that were approved. There's a large common area that separates kind of these two phases or what is now all in one sixty-seven lots. Um, this area required a core permit, so the entrance of the first twenty-seven lots were allowed to be preliminarilyed. But the additional lots, because they required a core permit, did not, were not a part of that preliminary. The core permit has been received and now they can cross this creek to access the additional property. There's, uh, Wall Trianna, um, or Trianna Boulevard that exists. Was that Wall Trianna?
Yes.
Wall Trianna? Or, yeah, Wall Trianna. Um, there is no access to or from Wall Trianna to the, uh, to the west. uh, to the west.
Will Wildwood and the retreat connect?
No, they will not, they'll be two separate developments. They are adjacent, but they also separate from a creek, uh, there's a creek that flows here, um, behind these last lots, lots, uh, four through twenty-one. And this is also a remained in common area.
It's two different development in terms of style, one lot size is a little bit bigger and two different developers.
Yeah.
So, has there been any traffic counts on Harbin and Nance Road? Cause this, this would add about a hundred and ninety between the two, I mean, I know they're separate, but they'll add about a hundred and ninety new homes and Harbin is two-lane narrow road and you have subdivisions across the street, um, and Waltryana and then Nance to the other side.
Based on traffic counts, they can handle it. In addition to this development, there are decelerated lanes and a, um, and left turn lanes installed with these, uh, particular developments to enter and exit, um, on, from Harbin, on, into these, uh, subdivisions.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eleven, the retreat, committee recommends repreliminary approval on a hundred and fifteen lots.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number twelve, Providence Phase Nine, presented for final approval on fifty-two lots.
Second.
Jim is in order for a final?
Yes, sir, with improvements in landscaping to be installed October eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, and sidewalks to be installed October eighteenth, two thousand nineteen.
All right, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion?
I need to recuse.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number thirteen, Village of Providence Phase Ten, the committee recommends relay out and repreliminary approval on fifty-one lots.
Second.
Any discussion?
I need to recuse on this item as well.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have location character or extent as well?
I can handle it. Moving on to location, character and extent, item number one, Huntsville International Airport, airline rear canopy, public hearing was held.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, Huntsville High School Softball Complex renovation and addition, public hearing was held.
All right, I need to recuse on this item.
Thank you, is there a motion? Any discussion? I just have one question, uh, just wanted to make sure, is gentleman still here?
Derek, Derek's here. He's coming down.
Derek, just want to make sure, does, uh, does this match the, uh, baseball facilities?
Almost exactly.
Perfect. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Item passes.
Thank you, all right, item, uh, let's see, part four of our agenda, vacation of right-of-way. Uh, item one, vacate unbuilt street named Clement Street, East Huntsville Edition, adjacent to seventeen oh nine Wellman Avenue, Block ninety-one, Lot eleven, plat book one, page thirty-five.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just would like to, uh, highlight and thank our planning department for having such excellent records from eighteen ninety-two.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, vacate unbuilt portion of right-of-way at the east end of Longwood Drive, adjacent to one thousand eight through one thousand fourteen, Longwood Drive, College Hill, second edition. Any discussion?
Yes, uh, Chair, Thomas, can, can you explain to us the need to vacate this?
Well, it's right-of-way that exists and, um, if there's, you know, there's, it's not, it's unbuilt, it's not built, it exists on a plat, but there is no need, it, it just exists in air. And, uh, there's no need for the city to own or, uh, be taxed on such or, uh, hold it as a part of their, um, their business to keep such right-of-way when there's no need for, when it doesn't exist in real time.
So we're releasing this back onto the tax rolls for the benefit of the city of Huntsville. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, vacate a portion of right-of-way at the east end of Creative Way, North Huntsville Industrial Park Phase Six.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, part five of our agenda is zoning, I'd like to ask, uh, Ms. Sally Warden, uh, to read our zoning committee report.
The zoning committee met on October the eleventh and we have the following recommendations. One, Harbin Road zoning, the public hearing was held this evening.
Is there a motion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two is the old railroad bed zoning, it's to zone it, uh, to Residence Two.
So moved.
Any discussion?
What is the zoning of the property directly south, adjacent to it? I think you told us what was north, but I didn't hear what you said when you said south.
I believe it is R two as well, let's double check.
That subdivision below it.
Well, I'm in the county. Here we go, it's actually in the county, so it has no zoning designation.
So all that surrounding is in the county except for what's on the...
Yes, sir, everything that's, uh, not shaded in any color is Madison, unincorporated Madison County.
Got it, thank you.
Um, the property's to the north and the yellow are the R two.
Okay, uh, we have a motion, a second, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is the Liberty Hill zoning, the proposed zoning is planned industrial.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four is the Oakwood Farms rezoning, this is rezoning from Residence One-A and Commercial Industrial Park to Research Park District.
Move to approve.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, uh, planning staff, have we notified the residents on Alberta Road?
Um, all property owners within five hundred feet were notified, only four of those, um, were returned to sender. Um, at this time, the university has a conceptual plan, but their plans are not finalized just yet, but those property owners were notified.
Thank you.
I think approximately seventy-two of those went out.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five is a zoning ordinance, ordinance amendment, it's Research Park District amendments to Article fifty, Research Park District by amending Section fifty point one, uses permitted. Section fifty point three, required yards, subsection fifty point three point one. Section fifty point four, density regulations, subsection fifty point four point one and fifty point four point two. Section fifty point five, street access and frontage, subsection fifty point five point one. Section fifty point six, off-street parking and loading requirements, subsection, subsection fifty point six point one and fifty point six point two. Section fifty point eight, height, low, height requirements and section fifty point nine, landscaping requirements, subsection fifty point nine point one, to update language concerning the existing Research Park District. The public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just, we talked about this and the Research Park Board has sent this for recommendation, I just want to verify that we have notified, um, the affected institutions, Alabama A&amp;M, UAH and Oakwood University regarding these changes.
Um, I know there has been some conversation with Alabama A&amp;M, there are some, uh, zoning requirements that the schools are exempt from, um, but they are aware that this is their zoning designation.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six is a zoning ordinance amendment, Research Park West District, it amends Article fifty-one, Research Park West District by amending Section fifty-one point three, required yards, subsection fifty-one point three point one. Section fifty-one point four, density controls, subsection fifty-one point four point three. And Section fifty-one point eight, height requirements, subsection fifty-one point eight point one, to update the language concerning front yard density and height regulations. This evening, a public hearing was held.
Move to approve.
Any discussion?
Yeah, uh, Ms. Ray, in my humble opinion, this is good for the park, so don't stay up tonight worrying about it, okay?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven is Whitesburg rezoning and the committee recommends that the Planning Commission set a public hearing for November the twenty-first.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And number eight is the Winchester rezoning, this is a rezoning from, uh, One-A to Neighborhood Business C one district. And the committee recommends that the Planning Commission set a public hearing for November the twenty-first.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, that concludes the zoning committee's recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Item six is invocation and extension of bonds, uh, Jim?
Yes, sir, staff recommends invocation of items one through three.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, part seven of our agenda is election of officers, uh, I would like to open the floor for nominations for, uh, president.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Les Tillery.
Okay, uh, the, do we need to vote on the closing of the floor or we just... Okay, if there's no further nominations, we'll close nominations. All in favor of, uh, Les Tillery as president, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, I'd like to open the floor for vice president.
Like to nominate Gary Whitley.
If there are no other nominations, I'll close the floor for nominations for vice president. We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Uh, all in favor of Gary Whitley for vice president, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for secretary.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Peggy Richard.
If there's no other nominations, I'll close the floor for nomination of secretary. Do I, do I need a second, is there a motion in a second? So, so we've, we've nominated, okay, it doesn't require a second. All in favor of, uh, Peggy Richard as secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'll open the floor for nominations of treasurer. All right, if there's no other nominations, I'll close the floor for nominations for treasurer. Uh, all in favor of Kelly Scrammshire for treasurer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Do we give a treasurer's report? Since there's zero in the account?
You have one?
Not aware of one.
Okay, thank you all for, uh, working through this long agenda, if there's no other items to come before the commission, our meeting is adjourned.